We call this meeting of the Waycross Commission to order. At this time, we will have introduction of our invocation followed by our pledge and our reading of decorum. Commissioner Solomon Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, our invocation will be given to us, will be brought to us by Bishop Michael, I'm sorry, Bishop Mayor Michelangelo James. Bishop Mayor is the son of Sylvester James and the late Mrs. Juanita James. He is a licensed, or has been a licensed gospel minister since August of 1980. He is a full-time pastor of Emmanuel's International Cathedral of the Holy Spirit. He has written numerous books. He has traveled around the world, and he is very, very active in this community. At this time, I give you our Bishop Mayor Michelangelo James. Will you please stand?
Let us pray. Holy Heavenly Father, we hallow your name and thank you for your grace, for your mercy, and your peace. You are our God, our guard, and our governor. We need your wisdom to lead. Give us, we pray, your view, and through the lens of your love, help us to see others as you see them. We ask that you give us the wisdom to judge and to also do the work of this city, and we pray, God, that you guide us throughout the remainder of these days, that those things we do will be right in your sight and that you will get honor and glory. It is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop Mayor, for that beautiful prayer.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the reading of our decorum by our clerk, and after which we will move into our meeting.
Decorum. The mayor and commissioners must conduct themselves in a professional and respectful manner. Except when authorized by the mayor, all remarks should be directed by the mayor and not to individual commissioners, staff, or citizens in attendance. Personal remarks are inappropriate. A commissioner may not speak at a meeting until he has been recognized by the mayor. All comments made by commissioners shall address the motion that is being discussed or be pertinent to the agenda item before the commission. B. The mayor shall enforce these rules of decorum. If a commissioner believes that a rule has been broken, he can raise a point of order. A second is not required. The mayor can rule on the question, or he can allow the commissioners to debate the issue and decide the issue by majority vote. Section two dash sixty-seven, Public Participation and Meetings of the City Commission. A. Persons who wish to address the City Commission, the City Commission under the public remarks on official actions agenda item must register in writing with the city clerk before the meeting begins and state the subject matter on which the speaker wishes to speak. The following rules shall apply. One, the speaker must begin the remarks by stating his name, address, and organization represented, if any. Two, the speaker must address all remarks to the mayor and not to any individuals. Three, the speaker's comments must be pertinent to the agenda item or items for which the speaker has signed up. Four, the speaker must avoid personal comments, political comments, and must avoid repetition and argument. Five, the speaker's comments shall be limited to five minutes. Six, after the City Commission begins discussing an agenda item, only the mayor, the commissioner, and persons requested to speak by the City Commission will be allowed to speak. Seven, except for unusual circumstances and only after a vote by a majority of the city's commissioners present at such meeting will a person who has not signed up in advance of the meeting be allowed to speak. Eight, all speakers must conduct themselves in a respectful manner and avoid vulgar, obscene, and profane language. Nine, the City Commission by majority vote of the members present may suspend all or any of these rules. Ten, any person who violates any of these rules may be removed from the meeting. Eleven, any speaker or proposed speaker who violates these rules after first being warned by the mayor or the City Commission, either or both, to cease such violations shall upon conviction in municipal court be guilty of an offense and punished as set forth in section one through nine. B. Any citizen shall have the right to address or speak to the City Commission for not, for no longer than five minutes on official actions or other topics relating to the business of the City Commission at meetings of the City Commission by expressing his desire to speak no later than the beginning of the meeting at which such citizen desires to address or speak to the City Commissioners. Persons who wish to address or speak to the City Commission under the guest agenda item must register in writing with the city clerk no later than the beginning of the meeting at which the he desires to address or speak to the City Commissioners and must state the subject matter of the speaker's remarks. The following rules shall apply. One, the speaker must begin the remarks by stating his name, address, and organization represented, if any. Two, the speaker must address all remarks to the mayor and not to any individuals. Three, the speaker's comments must be pertinent to the subject matter listed by the speaker upon registration. Four, the speaker must avoid personal comments, political comments, and must avoid repetition and argument. Five, the speaker's comments shall be limited to five minutes. Six, except for unusual circumstances after a vote by a majority of the City Commissioners present at such meeting will a person who has not satisfied the sign-up requirements be allowed to speak. Seven, all speakers must conduct themselves in a respectful manner and avoid vulgar, obscene, and profane language. Eight, the City Commission by majority vote of the members present may suspend all or any of these rules to the extent permitted by law. Nine, any person who violates any of these rules may be removed from the meeting. Ten, any speaker or proposed speaker who violates these rules after first being warned by the mayor or the City Commission, either or both, to cease such violations shall upon conviction in the municipal court be guilty of any offense and punished as set forth in sections one through nine. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we're going to hear our schedule for the public hearing, and we're talking to our city attorney.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have a math amendment request for a zoning change at nine fifty-one Evans Way, and we would like to set it on May the fourth, twenty twenty-one, at four thirty P.M. to give us time to run the mandated three public notices in the newspaper.
Thank you. Would you talk to us a little bit about the budget work session as well? Do we have that time? Anyone have any?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, if I may. That is going to be on May the sixth, twenty twenty-one. It'll be here in the commission chambers, starting at nine A.M. and going until twelve P.M.
Thank you. And appointments for Housing Authority, we have three names. Dr. Martha Hall will be, term expires on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Martin Eves is being brought back again. His term ended on the twenty-first of March, and it will continue until the twenty-first of March, twenty twenty-five. And Ms. Cleo Price will also begin her new term, or has begun, March twenty-first through twenty twenty-two. Official reports? City manager's report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We've had some beautiful weather this weekend, and I'm going to speak from, as the fire chief, for just a second. We've missed being able to get out into the public because of COVID- nineteen, and we were elated to be able to participate in Swamp Fest. We took our fire safety trailer down and the fire truck, and the crews rotated out Friday and Saturday, and we had contact with almost four hundred children and adults in doing that. And we were, the crews were talking about how much fun it was to be out there, to be able to do that again. So we're hoping this stuff gets over with and we can get back doing what we do, being part of the community again. And I want to close in wishing Commissioner Davis a happy birthday.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and I'll start out my comments with that very thing. Happy birthday to our statesman, none other than our District One Commissioner, Mr. Norman Davis, Senior.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. With that, I have an announcement. This is a public service announcement. This is from the Department of Theater, Drama, and Contemporary Dance. It's from Indiana University. It's telling us, "Thank you. I'm writing to thank you so much for taking time from your schedule to record our welcome message for our department's audio play entitled Waycross. The audio play was released today for our students and patrons, and we are already so proud of our students' work. Your participation made a wonderful addition to our show, and we are grateful. Additionally, my mother lives in Jacksonville, so the next time I drive through, I'll stop by Waycross and enjoy some of that town's charm. Again, thank you for your support and delight to have you included in our production." Again, that's from Indiana University College of Arts and Sciences in Bloomington, Indiana. At this time, are there any public remarks on official actions?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Let us hear the consideration of our official action.
Consent calendar. Approval amendments. Waycross City Commission and Information Session and Executive Session, Monday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at five o'clock P.M. Waycross City Commission Meeting, Tuesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, at five o'clock P.M. Second ordinances. An ordinance to amend the code of the City of Waycross, Georgia to amend chapter one eleven, signs, article one dash in general, by adding new section one eleven dash one pertaining to placement of signs on public property to repeal conflicting ordinances to provide for severability, to provide for an effective date, to provide for renumbering or relettering, and for other purposes. There are no privileged license renewals. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive the consent calendar?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
A motion to receive?
Move for approval.
And there's a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Let's move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent calendar approved. Madam Clerk?
Privilege license. Carmine's Italian Restaurante, three oh one Carswell Avenue, Waycross, Georgia, three one five oh one. Beer and wine consumption on premises. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this privileged license?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
It's been motioned and seconded. We heard from Commissioner Solomon Gaines as the motion. The second was from Commissioner Strickland. Is there any discussion on this privileged license? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Privilege license approved. Madam Clerk? This will be Ms. Linda.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. Our first item tonight is a request to extend our gas card service for FY twenty-two. In two thousand and eighteen, March, the City Commission awarded a bid to Lewis and Rollerson Fuel Lock Gas Card System for our annual gas and diesel card services. This also included an additional four-year renewal if all parties were in agreement and there were no price increases. And they have agreed to keep their pricing firm for another year, and this would be our third extension, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. With that being said, is there a motion to receive this bid?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion from Commissioner Davis, a second from Commissioner Solomon Gaines. On this bid, is there any discussion? Hearing none, at this time, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bid approved.
Okay, our last item tonight is bid number FY twenty-one dash seventeen. This was for Albany Avenue Street Improvements. We did, we bid two divisions on this project. We received two bids on Division One and two bids on Division Two. And after review, it's our recommendation to award Division One to East Coast Asphalt for a total not to exceed six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and forty cents. It's our recommendation to award Division Two to Thrift Brothers for a total not to exceed two million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy cents. The total project cost is not to exceed three million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand and forty-seven dollars and ten cents. And this is budgeted through two-spliced, regional and local, and is also a TIAA project. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. Is there a motion to receive this bid?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
A motion by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Solomon Gaines. Is there any discussion on this bid? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimous. This bid passes. Thank you, Ms. Linda. Madam City Clerk?
Ordinances. An ordinance of the City of Waycross, Georgia to create the City of Waycross Mayor's Youth Commission and for other purposes. By adopting this ordinance, the City Commission will create a commission to provide our youth an opportunity and platform to engage in the workings of our municipal government and assist them in promoting their leadership skills. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this ordinance?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Solomon Gaines, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance passes. At this time, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance to amend the code of the City of Waycross, Georgia to amend chapter two dash administration, article two dash City Commission, division two dash meeting section two dash sixty-six dash decorum to repeal conflicting ordinances to provide for severability, to provide for an effective date, to provide for renumbering or relettering, and for other purposes. By adopting this, by adopting this ordinance, the City Commission will amend and correct two dash sixty-six of the city's code of ordinances dealing with decorum and of those persons attending meetings of the City Commission. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, is there a motion to receive this ordinance?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
A motion by Commissioner Solomon Gaines, seconded by Commissioner Strickland. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance passes. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A resolution of the City of Waycross, Georgia to approve the signing of a mutual release of claims agreement and dismissal in a civil lawsuit brought by the City of Waycross against Okefenokee Humane Society Incorporated and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will approve joint resolution and dismissal of the lawsuit filed by the City of Waycross against Okefenokee Humane Society Seeking Financial Records. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this resolution?
Move for approval.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Solomon Gaines. At this time, is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the City of Waycross, Georgia to award bid contract to Lewis and Rollerson Incorporated for physical year twenty twenty-two gas card services and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will approve the extension of gas card service initially awarded to Lewis and Rollerson Incorporated on March twenty, twenty eighteen, for an additional year with the same terms and conditions. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
A motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
A motion by Commissioner Solomon Gaines, seconded by Commissioner Strickland. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Commissioner, this is the city manager. Nope. City Clerk?
A resolution of the City of Waycross, Georgia to cancel and terminate contracts with Utility Service Company Incorporated of Perry, Georgia for city's annual water tank maintenance and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will approve the cancellation and termination of the five separate contracts with Utility Service Incorporated of Perry, Georgia for the city's annual water tank maintenance and repair. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Solomon Gaines, seconded by Commissioner Strickland. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Resolution passes. Commissioner?
A resolution of the City of Waycross, Georgia to award bid contract to East Coast Asphalt LLC for Albany Avenue whitening and resurfacing project and to Thrift Brothers Incorporated for Albany Avenue drainage improvement project and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will approve a bid contract not to exceed six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and forty cents with East Coast Asphalt LLC of Douglas, Georgia for Albany Avenue whitening and resurfacing project and a bid contract not to receive two hundred million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy cents with Thrift Brothers Incorporated of Waycross, Georgia for Albany Avenue drainage improvement project, which includes sewer replacement. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this resolution?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Strickland. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk, do we have any guests?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have Tim Peacock. Mr. Peacock, if you come forward to the podium, please state your name and address, and just keep in mind that you have five minutes to speak.
When the five minutes is up, would you please let them know?
Yes, and when the five minutes is up, you'll hear the bell ring.
Tim Peacock, nine oh six Euclid Avenue. Mayor, Commissioners. I came before you two weeks ago with a question about the monument. If y'all considered sending a letter to the daughters as an end to this city's involvement and for documents proving that the statue is owned by the daughters and not the City of Waycross, I also asked why this issue could not be put on a ballot for the November third election and be voted on by the citizens of Waycross and Ware County. After sitting in on the meeting for the last two months and seeing the mayor and the commissioners being bullied into removing this statue by certain citizens, when putting this decision on the ballot would let the citizens vote on it, would alleviate any ill feelings toward the commissioners and therefore tarnishing their reputations during the time while they have served. Sitting in on the business meeting last night and listening to the commissioners applaud the efforts of the supervisor of elections and what he has done, I see no reason why there could not be a fair and impartial vote responding regarding this matter. And after speaking with multitudes of citizens from all the districts, including all races, I have found very few who even know that this decision has been made. When it has been said by commissioners that their constituents have pushed for this decision to be made, with this being said, and not receiving the respect or getting any answers to any of my questions so far, I would truly like to know what it would take to get an answer from the mayor or any of the commissioners or the city attorney. If this commission sets this precedence in which two or three citizens can demand that the city take action on any given issue, and the people are not allowed to vote on any given issue, then be prepared for these meetings to be filled with demands from small groups all over this city expecting the same results that has been given regarding this issue. And after sitting up there at the statue Saturday night, Friday night, nobody even knew anything about it, not, not one thing. I talked to young people, older people, black people, white people, everybody, because I know a sack full of people in this town. I asked them all about it. Nobody even knows about it. And I've been out in the communities and, and asking people what they've heard about it. Nobody knows. But this decision has been made, and this letter has been sent. So at some point in time, it's got to be put before a vote for this city. Because as I've said in the past, this is a major decision, major decision. It, it's, it's beyond the pay scale of this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other guests?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move into our last call. We're going to talk to our senior statesman. Allow him to talk. This is our birthday commissioner.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My heart goes out to the family of Verdiya Green. She was an outstanding leader in our community. And as a matter of fact, when I was fourteen years old, her husband got me my first job out of the, um, um, Yeoman's Animal Humane Shelter. So, uh, so I was, uh, that family was very deep, deep in my heart and into my family. So my heart goes out to her entire family and all those that have lost loved ones during these tragic times since the last time we met. Mr. James, did you find out what was the problem at Buckhannon and Charlton's?
Just didn't take care of it. E S U made repairs.
Oh, they made the repairs? Okay, because those signs have been up there for a while. I want to assure the, the citizens that the sign out at E Mill Park that was destroyed by a driver will be, I'm here, code alert, right here. It, James and, and Linda and all the working, and city manager are working on developing a very attractive sign to, for, to replace it. And if you just bear with us for a while, I'm sure you will like what they will replace. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Three?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I have is a happy birthday, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Solomon Gaines?
Commissioner, Bishop Mayor, I really don't have anything, but I would like to give Chief, if he would like, Chief Coster, opportunity to talk about your upcoming programs that you're having, your youth program and your, and your community programs, your church, that kind of thing. Thank you.
Actually, every Monday and Tuesday in May is going to be dedicated to the act of shooter response for places of worship. So if you sign up for the program, you can pick up an application first from the police department. But if you sign up for the program, the first day, which will be on Monday, is, um, is going to be all classroom, takes about three hours. And then the second day is actually going to be a, is a tactical class. And then we'll finish up at the firearms range. And the training is actually going to be held out at our new training facilities. And so also an opportunity for people in the community to see what's, you know, it worked out at, um, at the tra, um, Public Safety Training Center. So that's Monday and Tuesday of, um, first of every week in May. And then in June, June seventh through eleventh, we'll have the Junior Police Academy. It's going to be, be held at City Auditorium. It's going to be eight to five every day with the exception of that Friday, which will have a graduation ceremony. Then we're going to have a large cookout for the families. have a graduation ceremony, then we're going to have a large cookout for the families.
Chief, do you need any volunteers for that, or do you have your staff going to do it?
It's going to be staff, but I am looking at volunteers. I know Mr. Gory here is going to be one of the volunteers. He's going to be helping us out with, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. At this time, our mayor pro temp, Commissioner Strickland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'd like to echo happy birthday to the senior statesman. And, uh, tell everyone in the community, thank you for the, the turnout that we had at Swamp Fest. I think everybody was kind of excited to be able to get out into the community and actually have an event where, where people, wherever get to see people from, maybe not necessarily their neighborhood, but from around town that they may not have been able to see before. It's always a good time when, when this community can come together as one and, and enjoy each other's company. And, uh, hopefully, we'll be able to continue that moving forward. But I thank the people out at the, uh, at the vaccination site at the, at the mall. There's a lot of people that are, that are there working to put this thing together and really appreciative that the state recognized the logistical importance of Waycross, Georgia, and placing that site there. That's a very encouraging thing to, to me, because then that lets me know that Atlanta at least knows where Waycross is at. And, uh, and I think the volunteers and the people that are actually out there working from different states and different places, taking time away from their families to come and make sure that we're safe. And, uh, thank you for everyone in the city for all that you do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Solomon?
I'm sorry, I saw yesterday my way out towards the mall, um, the flashing sign said there's no, no appointment needed now. So you don't have to make appointments now?
No more appointments.
Now you're through the health department, just through them?
You just drive up?
Okay, for them. What about public health? Does anyone know?
I don't know about that.
Okay, but at this site, you just drive up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
With that question in mind, it deals with the Pfizer versus the Moderna. I think when you go to the DPH, you get the Moderna.
Okay.
When you go out to the mall section, it's going to be the Pfizer.
Okay.
And there's just a little bit of differential in the time of receiving the next vaccine. I think it's a twenty-one day interval for the Pfizer.
Okay.
And maybe a twenty-eight day interval for the Moderna, but we can check that for certain.
Okay, okay.
But thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Echoing the statement that was made regarding that site out there, I would like you to make sure you take advantage of the opportunity that we have there. Just drive up and go in. They're very nice workers, very nice nurses that have been assisting. And I've had opportunity to talk with them a couple of times, so I would encourage you to go out and feel confident that they'll do a great job for you. Couple of things, wanted to commend Chief. We had the opportunity, Chief Cox, had opportunity to work on a commercial together, and he did a tremendous job with it along with our youth who has gotten involved in this step up prevention, and it's called Step Up Wear. You can go online to YouTube, and you can see this prevention announcement and commercial being done. Wanted to also thank the commission for making history tonight. After one hundred and forty-seven years after incorporation, a first ever done in the city of Waycross, a mayor's youth commission. And I want to thank you so very much for allowing this to be so, and we'll do our best to make certain that it takes place. One hundred and forty-seven years, that's a long time not to have one of those, but it will prepare us to engage, to enrich, and to empower our youth. And I want to thank Mr. Gory who's here, who also has been helping me with that project. So we're trying to get something done for our community, looking forward to great things happening. Along those lines, we also want to say thank you to the families who have thought not robbery to check on us, check in, let us know what's going on in the community. We do appreciate the life of Ms. Green, as was stated by our Commissioner Davis, and we thank you so very much for the prayers that have been offered up for families. And again, with Pastor Bill Mullis's wife having passed on Easter Sunday morning, her service was today, we were grateful for a wonderful day outside and to know that no matter how dark it may be inside, the light is still shining. And with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
We do need to go into executive session for personnel.
Okay, since we have personnel, we'll move with the motion there. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're moving into executive session. Thank you all for coming. Executive session.